Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. In compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines relative to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
For Monday, February 22, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting. Mr. Dolan is absent. Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Justwicki?
Here.
Mr. Luisey is absent. Ms. Britto?
Yeah.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Haring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Well, I was going to say, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman, may I articulate the motion? Whereas the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, and whereas it is necessary for the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters related to items authorized by NJSA 10:4, those items being three items, Mr. Chairman, an item regarding personnel matters and scheduling, an item regarding the litigation related to the Jackson Trails litigation, and two items related to the litigation of the Ella Jackson, the North Parcel.
Thank you. You have a motion for executive session. All in favor?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just because of the public and the public being aware, I would have the public come back at 7:55, if that's acceptable. So, we're going to go into executive session. We're going to close the doors. Public, you should be available again at 7:55. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, some testimony from the applicant regarding adequacy of that facility. Based on the 12,000-square-foot diner that's proposed, that includes a basement area, 239 spaces are required, and 130 spaces are provided. So, it's a testimony from the applicant in support of that variance request. The ordinance requires complete curb and sidewalk along the front edge of Monmouth Road, and only a partial sidewalk and no curbing, I'm sorry, no partial curbing and no sidewalks proposed. So, some testimony from the applicant in support of that and confirmation that any waiver that might be granted, the applicant will contribute to the pedestrian safety fund. We reviewed the site grading and drainage. We provided some technical comments to the applicant regarding the drainage. Revised plans have been submitted that address the majority of those comments. The stormwater system will be owned and maintained by the property owner, and the appropriate maintenance manual and deed disclosures will be required. The applicant has provided site lighting in accordance with ordinance standards, and he's also provided some site landscaping, and we should have some discussion as far as addicts. We have that landscape as far as screening to any residential use as well as the drainage basin. The applicant should review the architectural features of the proposed building and also discuss the adequacy of the trash storage facilities that are proposed. There are some variance requests regarding site signage. The minimum sign setback to Monmouth Road is 25 feet and five feet proposed. Maximum building sign height, 14 feet per point six is permitted and 24 feet proposed, and a number of wall signs, ones permitted and twos proposed. And we provided some technical revisions to the applicant. He's addressed the majority of them with a revised plan submission. That's all at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Without repeating or trying not to repeat what Mr. Cleese said, we have a report dated February 17 of this year, which is a second review. The applicant took advantage of the timing to have a Zoom meeting with the board's professionals and take care of some of the initial comments that Mr. Cleese and I had, and we give them credit. We appreciate them trying to take care of some of these issues. The site itself is located in the HC Highway Commercial Zone. Restaurants are permitted in the zone. With regard to the basement, the applicant should indicate what's in the basement, what it's going to be used for. That'll help them with their parking relief. With regards to lighting, there may be a waiver for a couple of spots on the plan where lighting may be a little deficient. With regards to the access from 537 into the site, the access aisles technically require some waivers. I understand we'll get some testimony regarding that. There may be a waiver or two with regards to landscape islands and landscaping within the parking area, and there may be a waiver necessary for landscaping surrounding the current proposed location for the dumpster. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Galvin. I'm with the firm of Davidson, Eastman, Munos, and Peon, and I'm going to be representing the applicant tonight. Very happy to represent this applicant. I'm excited for them, and I'm excited for Jackson Township. I think this is going to be a terrific application and a terrific outcome for the township if you see fit. Oh, boy, she's very excited to be here tonight. So, I think that the first thing to start out with is, let's help you where this is going to be and what it's not, okay? What it's not is, when I'm working on this application, it's JB Diners in Jackson. It is not the Jackson Diner. There's no relationship to any diners in town at all, okay? Number two, where is it located? I agree. Do this every night of the week. I know where this location is, but it was very unclear from all the paperwork that you have. If you, to go with me for a little ride, we come off of 195. The world-leading pools and Christmas shops on my right, McDonald's is on my right. There's a whole lot of construction going on the left. I don't know what the heck that is. Then you get to the Great Adventure entrance, number one. Then you get to Great Adventure employee entrance that we take to go have special visits with Great Adventure. That's number two. And then on the left-hand side of the road, once you hit a patch of woods, that's where the diner's going to go. It's off the beaten track, off the beaten tra- tra- what is it? Trail. And it's really, it's old Jackson in the sense that it's a virgin wooded area that's going to be developed as it's supposed to be developed. The four variances, and I have really good technical staff, and I'll let them go. I don't want to take up, you guys have such a busy calendar in general. I don't want to waste time that I don't need to, but I'm willing to give you every bit of information that you need so you can make a decision. I think your professionals do a great job, but some of the nuances here, I don't know that you need every single one of them. But let's start out with the four primary variances that I see in this case. One is the proximity to residential. While it's true there is a slight variance because of where the parking lot is, the odds are that the property that's to our east will be developed commercially as soon as they can find a reasonable person to come in and use that property. And I've talked to people personally, and they didn't express any objection to me. The second thing I want to talk to you about is parking. Our parking regulations take into account all of the massing of the building as opposed to just looking at the dining area. We will suggest to you that we have more than adequate parking for every phase of this project. Again, we're not complying with the ordinance. I respect the ordinance, but what we're presenting to you will adequately meet it. And the final variance is for basically a shark fin. Like, this is going to be a classic diner, so it's got a little shark fin over the front doorway, and we think it adds to the look as an old-time diner. And that's the sign, that's one of the sign requests. So, those are the four main things I think you might be concerned with. We've got to get septic, and we're going to do that. We've been to Monmouth County and Ocean County, even though I don't think we should have had to go to Ocean County. So, we're trying to please everybody, all right? That's all right. On this drawing, I don't know what exhibit this is. Anybody want to help me with that?
About A1.
Aerial. It's the aerial exhibit, and you can see, if you look at that, that there really isn't anything surrounding us. We're in the woods. That's the main thing. We're on 537, but we're...
All right, just, Mr. Galvin, just for the record, we'll mark it A1. It's the aerial.
Sure, I didn't know if you pre-marked them, Mr. Gertner. That's why. We submitted everything in advance.
Yeah.
I mean, normally, when you're trying to consider whether there's a variance, you want to consider whether or not there'll be a negative impact on any of the surrounding property owners. We're really, we're really more or less in Great Adventure territory. There's no noise that we're going to make that's any louder than Great Adventure.
Okay, well, before he goes, let's raise your right hand.
Correct.
Sir, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, comments you're about to relay shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, please? And then the chairman will ask you some questions regarding qualifications.
Can you hear me now? All right. This is dangerous. Give me a microphone.
Go where else, Doc?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Rakesh Darji. It's spelled R-A-K-E-S-H. My last name is Darji, D-A-R-J-I. I'm a professional engineer and professional planner with the firm of Environmental Resolutions in Mount Laurel, New Jersey, at 815 East Gate Drive, Suite 103.
And you are a licensed engineer?
I'm a licensed professional engineer and licensed professional planner.
In New Jersey?
In New Jersey, yes, sir.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you. So, Mr. Galvin gave a little bit of background on exactly where the property is. I'll just give a little bit of brief description. The property is this little triangular portion here, if everyone can follow where I am on the screen. It's already previously been cleared. The application did receive approval from the township, from the board, back in the early part of the 2000s for, I believe, a 16,000-square-foot plus-or-minus commercial center. And the site was cleared at that time in preparation, and there was some earthwork done in preparation for that development. It didn't advance any further beyond that, and it's pretty much sat in that condition, in a clear condition since then. And the applicant is now the current owner of the property. As you can tell, behind the property is Great Adventure. To the east, having to the northeast and southwest, are existing residential properties that are located within the Highway Commercial District. The property is located in the Highway Commercial District. It's about a two-acre property. The applicant proposes a... So, the applicant's proposing a...
All right, Pangolin will mark that A2.
This, yes, this will be...
It's the site...
Yes, it's a rendered site plan.
It's the site plan rendering by Environmental Resolutions, Inc., dated February 22, 2021.
Thank you. That's perfect. This is great. This makes it a lot easier up there than here. Great. So, what the applicant's proposing is a, roughly like Mr. Cleese said, roughly almost a 12,000-square-foot diner. The diner itself is the first floor. We're proposing two phases. Phase one is roughly a 5,600-square-foot space with 200 feet. Phase two is this little small rectangle to the right, which will not have a basin underneath it. It's another 1,000 square feet or so, and that'll have 50 seats as part of a future phase of the development. The phase-one portion does have a basement, and that's actually what leads to the parking variance that we were discussing earlier.
And how are we going to use that basement?
The basement space is going to be used by the applicant for a small office for the management, a bakery area for the in-house baked goods, and then storage. There's cold storage and then regular miscellaneous kind of storage for their equipment and supplies for the diner. There will be no seating, no other preparation or anything else down there. That's simply just an ancillary space. One of the great things about this property is it's got really great soils, really good depth of season-high water table. It's conducive to actually having a basement storage space, so the applicant's taking advantage of the fact that they can have that and still have a more or less an A-grade diner as well. So, the site will actually be serviced by two full-function accesses, one way in and then out, separated by about, maybe about 150 feet or so. The site does front on Monmouth Road, Route 537, split between Millstone Township and Jackson Township, and this portion of the roadway is under the Monmouth County jurisdiction. Prior to the applicant actually undertaking the full design of the site plan, we actually did meet with Monmouth County a few times to basically come up with a scheme for access onto the site that would be acceptable to the county, and this is really what came out of those discussions. The site will be serviced by 130 parking spaces. Would, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's much better. The site has been designed to accommodate access by all the vehicles that will be, that we expect to enter onto the site, including passenger vehicles, tractor-trailer deliveries for goods, for supplies, and also trash trucks to pick up trash and recycling. The trash enclosures are actually located right here. That's what these two squares are at the bottom-left corner of the building.
They will be enclosed?
They will be enclosed, and one will be for recycling, one will be for trash. One of the waivers that are noted in your planner's letter is regarding the requirement for landscaping around trash enclosures, which typically, you know, is obviously a laudable requirement and something that's, you know, I'm usually 100% compliant with and agreeance with. But given the location of these trash enclosures and the use that we anticipate, landscaping around these enclosures is really a practical thing because of the way that they're located within a concrete area already. Yes, we're going to propose 130 spaces for the entire site.
Have you received that?
Yes. We have our traffic engineer is here with us this evening to discuss what the typical requirements would be for a diner with restaurants. But typically, the requirement for a diner from industry standards is either one space for every three seats, and some industry professionals say, you know, one space or two spaces for every tabletop, plus one space for every employee in your peak shift, which does, it's not too far out of line, actually, with your requirement. What really throws us a little bit for a loop is the fact that the basement area, in this case, gets counted as part of the gross floor area, and that's really where our discrepancy comes about. If we didn't have the basement, we'd be just in line with the same spaces as well. Truck traffic actually will just access, use the normal access, the drive aisles, and ready eye are designed to permit trucks to come in and traverse through this. This will be the main access route. This striped area here is our loading area. These are trash and recycling. The trucks will come through, access, get the trash, and then exit. The applicant actually has the ability to control that as their needs dictate. Typically, they do own other diners, and their need is about once a week or so. But should the need arise to come, you know, to get the trash picked up more frequently, they certainly have the ability to do that. They'll be employing a private hauler to come in and take the trash away, so they have the ability to actually control how many times a week and at what time they actually come to pick up the trash. So, it's not in conflict with their peak usage times, and also, they can come as frequently as they need to.
Can you talk about that sign?
Certainly. So, the applicant is proposing a monument sign, which doesn't really, it may show up, but it's a little bit obscured in this area. It's a fairly modest monument sign. It's got a brick base and brick piers. It's a four-foot-by-six-foot monument sign. It is located about five feet off of the right-of-way. Your ordinance requires it to be 20 feet off of the right-of-way, but given the configuration of our site and how the drainage actually flows, the sign is sort of located just where it can be located, so it's not in the middle of the drainage basin. It's also located outside of the site triangle. There's a site triangle illustration within the site plans, which shows that the site triangle for a person exiting at this drive, it goes well into the roadway. So, the actual sign itself does not obscure a line of sight, and that's really the main thing that you're looking for when you have a requirement to pull a sign or a monument sign off of the roadway is to make sure it doesn't obscure line of sight and doesn't create an adverse safety condition, which this sign location certainly will not. So, we do need that relief, but we believe it's justified, given the fact that we do need to have the sign a little closer for the motorists on the road to see the sign. Obviously, our sign will be there, and also our address. I think one of the questions in your planner's letter was to, where do the site, the street address will be displayed, and that'll be displayed on that monument sign as well. So, we want that address to be finally displayed as well. No problem. I'll try to speak a little slower. So, that monument sign is actually going to display the address as well. So, that will be about five feet off of the roadway. And the relief, again, what I was saying was, would be justified because typically, the location of the sign, when you have a proximity to the roadway, that requirement is usually there to ensure that you have a safe condition when it comes to line of sight. And as illustrated in our landscaping plan, the line of sight is clear of the sign, and we do need that sign to be a little closer so that when you have motorists trying to access the site, they can see that the diner site, they can read the address and access the site. Absolutely. We certainly can. There is one more signage variance, which is the, there's a fin, which... Okay, we'll let the architect cover that. And then, so, there were some waivers and some testimony that was requested by your professionals' reviews. We can certainly go through those items.
What's the feeling on the board?
I think in general, what I can say about the professional reviews is, we did get a chance to revise our plans, I should say, in response to the first reviews that we received from Mr. Cleese and from Mr. Peters, and we submitted those revised plans maybe about a week and a half ago or so. And we are in agreement with the comments from your board professionals. We have no objection to modifying and revising our plans to comply with the requirements. There were a lot of technical kind of requirements that we needed to address, which I think we addressed quite a bit of that. But to the extent that there's some additional outstanding items, we have no objection to revising our plans to satisfy those.
Mr. Cleese and Mr. Peters, what's your feeling on that?
Doug, you have to, Mr. Cleese, you have to use your mic, though.
I really have no issues there. We did have a Zoom meeting, and the plans were submitted, which addressed the majority of our comments. I think it really comes down to the support of the variances that are requested.
Okay. So, you're comfortable with foregoing the minutia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just recommend that they make sure they list the variances and waivers on the record so they can be placed in an affirmative resolution. Otherwise, they won't get them, and they'll get stuck at resolution compliance. And then just indicate any of the comments that are in either of the reports that they have an issue with.
Okay.
I have the variances listed.
Okay, go ahead.
Great. So, I do have the variances listed, and certainly, if there's something that I may have overlooked, I would appreciate that. So, there's a variance from Section 244-207A5 to permit the building-mounted sign to be higher than the main roof line of the building. The applicant's architect will address the, illustrating that variance, but that is a variance that the applicant requires. There's also a variance from Section 244-207A15, which prohibits roof signs, which, again, is along the same lines with regard to the fin where the sign is located. There's also a variance from 244-207B7A, which permits one wall sign. Again, this has to do with that same architectural element, the fin with the sign on both sides. Technically, that's considered a wall-mounted sign, and since your ordinance only permits one, we have a sign facing in both directions on that fin. So, technically, that is a, it counts as two signs. We have a variance from 244-207A26 and 244-207B6F, which states that signs less than 25 square feet shall be no closer than 20 feet to the right-of-way. That's the variance that we just talked about earlier, where the applicant's proposing a 24-square-foot monument sign that's five feet from the Route 537 right-of-way. We have a variance from 244-207J36D, which prohibits more than four colors for the ground-mounted sign. We don't require that variance. I don't believe, we don't have more than four colors on the sign. Is that correct? Yeah. So, we don't require that variance. That was noted in Mr. Peters' letter, just stating affirmatively that we don't need that variance. Same thing with the requirement for the number of colors on the wall-mounted sign. We don't require that variance either. 244-57D requires a minimum of a 20-foot parking setback from residential uses. That's the relief that Mr. Cleese talked about earlier. That's along this, that's along the side property line. The ordinance requires a 10-foot, but the way that our parking comes out, it's actually, I'm sorry, ordinance requires 20 feet, I apologize. With the most recent iteration of the site plan, we revised the site plan in response to your professional's letter, and the final disposition is that this dimension here is actually 7.7 feet, where 20 feet is required. That's correct. No, yeah, and we're on our property, but we're not, we don't have the 20 feet that's required. But there is no real residence in the location there. We are a little close in this area as well, less than 20 feet, but 7.7 is our narrowest spot, which is right there. But again, we're probably about 60, 70 feet from the nearest structure and probably about 100 feet from the nearest dwelling. We do require a variance, and again, going back to the parking, we discussed that. That's Section 244-197N, which requires one parking space for every 50 gross square feet, which translates to a requirement of 239 parking spaces, whereas the applicant is proposing 130. And I provided some discussion on that earlier, but our traffic engineer can certainly provide additional testimony to that if the board sees it necessary. We do have some design waivers as well. There's design waivers from 244-197J22A, which requires the... There's design waivers from 244 dash 197J22A, which requires the throat length of our access drive aisles to be 100 feet. And we have roughly 68 feet. This type of requirement is typically obviously for, to allow for stacking on, on the exit aisles so it doesn't adversely impact the site or adversely impact the vehicles coming off of the roadway. Given the unique shape of our property and, and the need to have a certain amount of parking, we feel that the, the provision of 68 feet versus the 30, 100 feet is actually a, an optimal design alternative. And it's a design waiver, so it doesn't require the same proofs as a, as a variance. We do require a design waiver from 244 197J1B, which requires a 10-foot wide landscape strip along the rear and sides. And again, this is a design waiver and the, the purpose or the intent, I should say, of providing that landscape upper is actually served by, by the fact that we're surrounded by a wooded condition when you, as you saw on the, on the aerial map. We are proposing actually landscaping along the perimeter of our parking lot consisting of, I think, something in the, in the neighborhood of like 500 shrubs and about 2,000 perennials and grasses. Okay, and we also have a variance from 244 207J36D, which prohibits, oh, sorry, that's, I'm back to, I didn't put the page, I just went back to the old page. And that's, that's it as far as what I have noted for, for any design waivers and variances. There were certain testimony that, that your, your professionals did request with regard to ADA accessibility and the like. I'll just cover that real quick. The site does provide the required number of ADA spaces. Based off the 130 spaces in the parking lot, we require five ADA spaces and they're located right in this area and this area. There's three here and two there. So the striped areas are the, are the loading zones, are the handicap loading zones. And at those areas, we have the ADA required ramps. And then along the front of the site, we actually have a, a access ramp, which gets you up to the elevation of the front door. And the ADA spaces and the entire site are designed to be compliant with current ADA requirements with regard to accessible route proximity and grade. There was a question about sidewalk. The applicant isn't proposing any sidewalk along Monmouth Road. There really isn't any sidewalk along this stretch of roadway for quite some time. And the applicant isn't proposing any sidewalk. We are proposing curbing along, basically along the, leading up to each of the accesses and in between the two. And we're working with the county to get this, get this design approved. We really don't see a need at this time for sidewalk, certainly, certainly if there's a requirement. I believe that's, that's, that's what we're going to do. That's the requirement, we'll do that. Yes, currently, and it should sidewalk come in the future, the funds will be there for, for the township to construct the sidewalk. Those are all the waivers, variances. There was some testimony that was required, which I'm just sort of getting through here real quick. Up, we're good? All right, great.
Just a second, any questions?
Yes.
This, here? Of the, the side here? Okay. We're actually proposing to basically plant this entire area with shrubs. The applicant has been in contact with that resident actually, and we're working with them to make sure that they're actually satisfied with, with what, what the applicant's proposing. They're not, no, they're not, I don't believe they're here this evening.
They may be, if somebody raised their hand so you get to them.
We're actually, we're proposing. Yes, we're proposing shrubbery and we're proposing, looks like about four or five trees in that area and also shrubbery that, and again, we'll, we can revise this landscaping to. The home is actually, is right there. So that distance is approximately, from the parking lot to the home is approximately 100 feet.
With the head-on parking that you have there and the property line being so close, I might suggest a fence to prevent the headlights of the cars going into the, the house.
Yeah, that's.
Well, anywhere where there's head-on parking, that could spill onto. Yeah, at least there.
I think we can manage.
And I'm not sure about the other side, what, what structure is over there. But obviously with the head-on parking, the headlights are going to go into the other property.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what, we can certainly accomplish a privacy fence along those, those sides, that's not a problem. That's, yeah, certainly the, the applicant has a private hauler that they work with and they have the ability to work with them to, to time their, their trash pickup. So certainly. You're willing to work with the, as far as limit, I think the concern that Mr. Fleming has is to not have your trash picked up at 5 o'clock in the morning when, when the residents are trying to sleep or at 11 o'clock at night. Yeah. At 25, yeah. That's what engineers do. Yes.
What is the dining capacity?
The capacity is, with phase one is 200 seats and phase two is another 50, so a total of 250 seats.
250 seats.
That's correct.
And 100 parking spots.
That's correct. Well, it's 130, but the, the 100, there's 130 total parking spaces. If you count for 20, 25 employees, that leaves 110 to 100, 105 to 110. Yes, so the way that, the way that I regard parking for, for diners and restaurants usually, it's really based off of tabletops, really more so than square footage or seats. You really want to base, you base it off of tabletops. So we have 43 tabletops altogether in, in the diner between phase one and phase two.
That makes me feel a little better.
That's, that's the way I always, you know, look at it as well.
Anyone else? Mr. Wright?
Do you have any provision for outside coolers on ground, ground mounted?
Outside coolers?
Outside cooler, outside freezer?
No, there, there's, there's no outside storage of any kind.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Will the diner also provide carryout services or just, it's just dine-in?
No, she's a board member.
Yes, yes, they're, they're going to have carryout service, absolutely.
Will spaces be designated specifically for that purpose?
You guys doesn't, they don't currently have any plans to designate that.
Yeah, we're going to, I'm going to bring my client up and have him, I'll have him answer that, okay? They're doing it currently and they have an operation that's very busy. I included in the package, which I think we have to mark, three photos that show their existing operation on Route 33. It's called JB Diner.
Anyone else? No, your next witness?
Yeah. Call up our traffic expert.
Certainly, Deanna, Deanna Drum, D E A double N A, D R U double M, with the firm of environmental resolutions.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Chairman will vordear you as to your expertise.
Certainly, I'm a licensed professional engineer as well as a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, specializing in traffic and transportation engineering. I also have over 25 years of experience in the field.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here for two reasons. One is really to give you just a very brief overview of the traffic as well as I'll also provide some additional planning testimony regarding the parking variance. A traffic assessment was prepared that has been also submitted to this board as well as Monmouth County as well as Ocean County. If you're probably very familiar with 537, you know, it is what I call a seasonal roadway because during non-seasonal, which means when Great Adventure, Great Adventure really is not in session, you have one type of volume. And then when Great Adventure is in season, you do have a little bit more volume, especially on what I'm going to call the, the west side of Great Adventure. You get more between Great Adventure and 195, just because that's where the predominant, you know, traffic is to and from Great Adventure. However, we did take a look at what I call the nationwide standards on how much traffic is going to be generated. As you're aware, you know, 537 is a county roadway. It is under the jurisdiction of, of Ocean County as well as Monmouth County. Monmouth County pretty much takes the lead on traffic improvements. Ocean County typically takes the lead on frontage improvements. So it's kind of like a, you know, we get two, two, two of them are reviewing our applications. We have met with Monmouth County, we've had a few discussions, and we are going to be improving 537. We're going to be putting a bypass lane in, so we're going to be widening the other side of the shoulder. So if somebody is, you know, stacking, waiting to make a left turn, somebody who's coming down 537 can maneuver around that vehicle. We are also going to do widening along the frontage to 20 feet. So there is going to be a little area for, you know, shoulder area so people can pull off to make the right turn into, into the diner. In regards to operations, you know, again, during what I call the non-seasonal, it's going to operate a level service C, you know, trying to make that left out. You know, it's, it's basically a grade book, A through F, you know, F means you do have to wait a little bit. During the, the seasonal hours, of course, with Great Adventure, you are going to have a little bit more of an increase delay.
So do you find that the way we design this is adequate for allowing people to safely enter and exit the site?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I do.
I'd rather you move on to the parking.
Absolutely.
This is not one of those sites that needs a lot of consideration for that.
Regards to parking, you've heard Mr. Darji, you know, also provide testimony. I took, you know, one of the reasons why you have a parking ordinance is really to provide adequate, you know, parking to, to meet the anticipated demand. We actually, as, as traffic engineers, we actually looked at studies, again, us as traffic engineers, we go out there, we count cars and it's published in a, in a, in a document that we reference. For the 250 seats, I'm looking at phase two, which is going to be your maximum. We anticipate you're going to need at peak time about 110 spaces. Again, peak time is going to happen for about two to three hours during the day, whether it's at lunch or whether it's dinner. And again, that's about an 85% saturation rate. And again, that is less, you know, your highest saturation rate you typically want for these type of developments is about 90%. So there is going to be a little bit of flexibility. And again, it's only for a two to three hour time period. The other times of the day, you're going to have a much lower parking demand. So it's my professional opinion that I think this is a good fit. You know, we are providing adequate parking as well as we're also reducing the impermeable cover, which is important to any type of design for planning. It's basically good planning in my professional opinion and it's, and it's not going to be a substantial detriment to your zoning ordinance regards to parking.
Mr. Yelvin, you're going to have to use a microphone before you said, thank you.
So I'm, I'm not used to it, all right? So we submit this, this witness to your, to your consideration.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for this witness? No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I want to call my client up next. Raise your right hand. Sir, do you solemnly, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation with the applicant?
My name is Cupertino Herrera, C U P E R T I N O, H E R R E R A.
What's your affiliation?
I'm the owner of the diner.
Okay, now, yeah, go slow.
C U P E R T I N O.
Cupertino Herrera, and you guys can call him Coop, okay? Now, you own a diner currently on Route 33, is that in Howe?
Yes.
Okay, and is that going to be somewhat similar to this operation?
Yes.
And how often do you have the diner completely full?
Which usually happens in the weekends and around nine o'clock, three hours top, four hours tops. And after that, three o'clock, it just empties out.
Do you have adequate parking?
Yes.
Okay. How many employees do you have at a peak time?
At a peak time, right now I have eight.
Oh, isn't it more like 20, 25? You have eight?
For the new one, yes.
For the new one, oh, right now it's eight, but the new one will have 20, 25?
Yes.
Okay. Will they, are they all going to drive to your premises?
Yes.
Okay. You like this location, right?
Yeah, of course.
And you're happy to become a member of the Jackson community, right?
You're always looking this way for a while.
Okay. All right, any other questions to this witness? Yeah, borrow it.
Yes.
Yeah, sir, Mr. Cartney, I apologize, you have to use a mic.
So this is Joe Riccardi asking the question.
Okay.
At the other location that you have is running now?
Yes.
You have the same type of, of storage?
Yes, yeah.
And that works for you?
It works fine.
Okay. No problem with carting up and down, any of that kind of stuff?
No problems at all.
Okay. The, the other location, not that I'm picking on the other location, just a point of reference. Your location, what kind of seating, how, how many people does that seat?
200.
200, so you're used to this volume, you know what you're talking about, you've done this before.
Yes.
This is a business you know.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something that's going to happen. Yes.
Shel Campbell, what are your hours of operation going to be?
Well, a rel in the morning, six in the morning until 12 o'clock at night.
Thank you. Three services, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
But you give breakfast anytime, right?
Anytime.
Okay. Thank you, thanks, Coop.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Last but not least, we have our acclaimed designer. Sir, you've raised your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, testimony, questions or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation? And then the chairman will vordear you related to your credentials.
My name is Mark Blash, B L A S H, C H. I'm the architect with my own firm. And I've been, I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey and I've been doing diners for about 25 years now.
So tell us, tell us about your, your basement here.
So let's mark that as A3, right?
Okay.
Yep. I am, thanks, I'm trying anyway.
This is a classic 50's style diner. It is stainless steel, the base is granite and, and actually the. And, and actually, the red stone is granite from India. One of the few red stones available. It has that, the fin on that, again, is sort of a homage to 50s drive-in theaters, 50s, you know, roadside architecture. That is there intentionally to give greater visibility on the street as you're coming down. This is on a fairly high-speed road. That gives you a better shot of the diner, of what it is, as opposed to driving past it at 40 miles an hour and kind of craning your neck in. That view is actually from the driveway as you would approach, as you're pulling into the diner. So and of course, at night, it's lit with LEDs that sort of simulate neon. Nobody does neon anymore. And the, it's hand-bent stainless steel. There's really only two companies in New Jersey, or two companies in the country, actually, that can do this type of work. And we've been, I've worked with both of them. We've had this guy lined up for a couple of years now. So, and he's done a number of diners similar to this. A lot of stainless steel work in New Jersey, he's done. So.
Anything else to present?
Unless you want to go over the plan, doesn't matter. I mean, I can show them the basement. I've got a layout of the basement that shows you what's there.
Yeah, it was in our package. We have.
Yeah, it's there. It's, yeah.
I don't think that's necessary. Does anyone have any questions for this gentleman? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's our case. We ran out of witnesses. We ran out of witnesses. Okay. Do we have anyone from the public? With a hand raised? All right, Mr. Jacob, how many people are on? First of all, I apologize. Okay. Any hands up? Okay, put them on. I think that's obvious. Yeah. Doesn't have to be for him. Matter's open to the public. Hello? Mr. Jacob, what's the gentleman's or person's name? I'm sorry. Hendrickson? Mr. Hendrickson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, thanks.
Wait, hang on, Mr. Hendrickson. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Can you put on your video also? Make sure you're better understood. Yeah, fantastic. Perfect. All right, Mr. Hendrickson, we're going to take your word at your raise, and Ms. Hendrickson. I guess, who's going to testify? Both or just one?
Ray will.
Okay. Mr. Hendrickson, thank you for raising your right hand. You've raised it. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your street address, please?
It's Raymond Hendrickson. Last name is H E N D R I C K S O N. The address is 589 Monmouth Road, Cream Ridge, New Jersey, 08514.
And just for the record, even though it's a Cream Ridge post office address, you're in Jackson Township, correct?
I'm in Jackson Township, the lot immediately to the right of the one that the applicant is speaking about tonight.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
So one, I just would like to respectfully disagree with the two gentlemen who spoke before. No one has spoken to me about the property. I have no interest selling commercially, nor has anyone talked to me about fencing or anything. So I just wanted to make sure that the record shows that no one has spoken to me or contacted me. The first letter I got was received a week ago on Friday before this meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the board.
Yes, loud and clear. Do you have any comments or?
Yeah, like, the first thing I found interesting is in the certified letter that I received, there were three variances requested. And then tonight, there were a litany of other variances that were requested. So I just wanted to mention that the letters that were sent out from the attorney did not reflect all the variances described tonight.
I don't think so. Okay, and do you have any objection?
Yeah. So my first question is, you know, I'd like to understand more about fencing and landscaping that will be put in between the property that was spoken a little bit. And I appreciate the board member who mentioned having fencing to protect the headlights being facing into our windows that would be adjoining that property. But really, my concern is what's going to be done about the light pollution, also making sure that people are not turning around in my driveway. That's already a big concern with Top Gun down the road in Jackson of people coming and driving up to my garage and turning around. And also, there's a ton of Great Adventure traffic that already misses Great Adventure and turns around in my driveway. And it wouldn't be so bad if people just turned around in the driveway, but they come all the way up to the house, to my back door, and drive on the lawn. And just what protections will be made to protect my lawn?
Wayne Press? Well, first of all, I always tell the truth. That's what my mother taught me, and that's what I do. And what I was talking about was not you, sir, I was talking about Ms. Metzger.
Okay.
Judy, Judy.
She's west of the property.
I made a directional mistake, and I apologize. As to the fencing, let's talk about it. What would you like, what would you like there? Would you like a board-on-board fence? You like a white fence? You want it to be six feet in height? We cannot control, we will only cooperate with you on that, but we cannot control others. We cannot control what's going to happen now that there are things being constructed along 537. I mean, again, the, the problem with.
Oh, hang on, you're, let's part, you're going forward. You asked the gentleman about his preference for a fence. Let's see if he has one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thanks.
I mean, ideally, I would like a six-foot fence, whether it's board-on-board, PVC, vinyl, or whatever it is, but just something, you know, of that nature. Don't really have a particular preference, but as long as there's some form of six-foot stockade-like fence in between the properties.
We're happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, we, I'm sorry we overlooked it before now. Wasn't intentional. I would just say, Mr. Hendrickson, as well, arguably, with a well-lit commercial use, there's a better chance that folks use the diner as a turnaround moving forward than your house, hopefully.
That's actually a great point.
Yeah, I would. I would do that.
So I'm sorry, this is Nicole Hendrickson.
Hendrickson, if you're going to. Raise your right hand.
Oh, sorry, yes.
So Ms. Hendrickson, raise your right hand. You also solemnly affirm, swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
What's your first name, ma'am?
Nicole, N I C O L E. Last name is Hendrickson, H E N D R I C K S O N.
And you're also at 589 Monmouth Road?
That's correct. So my question is about the sign that's, that the variance on the sign, that this is the first time we are hearing about this, as Ray has already indicated, this is not indicated in the letter. It only being five feet off the property instead of 20, I'd like to understand, as of right now, the bushes that are along the edge, which will clearly be gone once the parking lot and such go in, already impact the ability for us to be able to see out of our driveway to see if traffic is coming, especially on looking to the left on, on that side. How is that, how, how are you going to, how are you going to confirm that that sign will not impede my ability to see traffic coming at us as we're trying to get out of our driveway?
Mr. Galvin, perhaps you could have your traffic person testify to that. It's a sightline issue. Sightline issue.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Hendrickson, the, the location of the sign is actually going to be, it's about five feet off of what's the proposed right-of-way. So when you're talking about where it's going to be located as far as the edge of the road, I don't know if you have the ability to see the rendering on your screen currently. I don't know if it's being shared to you or not, but.
No, it's not being displayed.
So, so the sign itself, from the actual road, the actual pavement that's there, it's about about 40 feet, roughly. I apologize, I'm trying to yell things like I hear, but you're about, it's about 40 feet or so off of where the current edge of the road is. So, so when you're, when you're looking at the, at the road, we're actually going to clear that vegetation that you're talking about, that blocks kind of site. That's actually going to get cleared as part of the work that we're doing. And then the sign itself is actually going to be located about 35 to 40 feet or so up. And I'm only, I'm only giving you a range because I'm eyeballing the location from the rendering I have. It's about 35 to 40 feet or so off of the edge of the roadway, the current edge of the roadway.
Okay, and, and at some point, you'll have like a confirmed site plan so that we can?
We, we have that, yes, absolutely. And I could. It, it is actually available online. I can actually, I have a scale in my briefcase. If you wanted me to scale it off, I can give you an exact distance. I can do that. Can you, can you do that? So I, I can get that to you, but, and, in a second. But that, that's, that's the location of the sign. So, so the relief that we're seeking is actually five feet off of what the proposed right-of-way would be. The county, the county is actually asking us for, I believe, an eight-and-a-quarter foot dedication of right-of-way, and then we're five feet off of that.
Okay.
So you'd be that much further out.
Yeah.
Can you provide with the drawings that, you know?
Certainly.
Yeah, if they were here, we could take them in the hall and show them. If we got clearance.
We have clearance now for the driveway. They're further, further west. They should have the same and greater clearance further down. That could be explained from an engineering perspective. You could just look at the map.
I have a couple of concerns about the discrepancies with the notice that they received with the variances required. There, there wasn't. There was not. I mean.
I was very sorry.
Copy that.
So I, I had actually sent the planning board secretary a copy of the letter with my questions. And you will see in there that the applicant is seeking, is seeking the following three variances. And it just talks about the difference in the 130 parking spaces. There's two of those for section 244-197N, and one for section 244-57D. Those are the only three that are referenced in the certified letter I received in the mail. None of the other ones that were discussed tonight were communicated to me.
All I can say to you is there, that we also have a provision there that says that any, any variances raised by the board or its professionals at the time of the hearing. And you're clearly here. Those are what I would consider. Certainly.
Mr. Gordon, do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
They're not specifically called out.
It specifically says it's the, the applicant is seeking the following three variances. And the letter was very specific on that.
And then there's the catchall that indicates further, the applicant hereby also requests any variances or waivers determined to be required by the board of its profession.
And I understand that, but I would have just thought, out of appreciation for other members in the community, that you would have also shared that information, especially since the letter was sent so late.
So we, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Hendrickson, this is a constant dichotomy between the needs and requests of the public versus what the statute indicates and requires. So I'm going to parse what I'm saying into two pieces. One, the statute only requires 10 days' notice. So, and it doesn't even necessarily address receipt of that notice. So from a statutory perspective, the notice itself was, was adequate in terms of time. Now, as to, as to the adequacy, the substance of the notice itself, it's sufficient for the board to, to obtain jurisdiction. My position has always been with regard to substantive issues of notice beyond that point. There's case law as to, as to the determination of when is notice substantively adequate. Mr. Galvin can talk about it if he chooses or not. My position is always that they've called out the three variances. They have the requested catchall, so to speak. Everything else is at their own, at their own peril. It's sufficient for the board to obtain jurisdiction. Understood. Mr. Hendrickson, are you, are you okay with that? You understand that, you know, this is not really a technicality. It's what I want to make sure that any issues that you have with this application ring out now. Now's your opportunity to speak, and the floor is yours.
Yeah, so the other major concern we have is about the lighting from both the parking lot and now the large fin over the door. So a six-foot fence is fine, but clearly, parking lot lighting is much taller than six feet, as will that fin be. So what, what will we do, or what will you do, like, what measures will you take to mitigate the light pollution that is going to clearly impact our, our house?
That's a good question and understood. And please keep in mind that Jackson has ordinances with regards to lighting, that we are very in tune with light pollution and with light spilling onto other property. But that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant's engineer and have them further explain the lighting.
So thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. The, the lighting actually will be designed with, with cutoffs. We, we actually do have, have some modifications to make to the lighting still based off of comments from the board's professionals. And we're going to work with them to make sure that we comply with the minimum requirements that we, that we have at the, at the property. And when I say minimum, I don't mean minimum, meaning the bare minimum we have to do, meaning so it's the least amount of impact to anybody. I mean, in general, is, is going to be flat lens lighting. So there's two things that, that you really concern yourselves with when, when it comes to lighting. The first is the level of illumination that you actually get at ground level, which is certainly something that's perceptible. But then the, the bigger issue is, is actually the glare that you get from the actual light itself. So even if it's something's not lighting up in your feet, when you look at it, it's a nuisance because there's glare. So what we're doing for both those things, first for the illumination, is we, we actually designed the lighting with, with houseside shields, which basically is a shield that keeps the lighting, lighting from illuminating beyond our property, the property line and onto your property. So that, that would address the illumination portion. And as far as the, the glare portion, what we do is we actually propose it to handle that with the fixture itself. We have flat lens recessed fixtures, so they're, they're not the, the things that you see at, let's say, a commercial parking lot, or at least the older commercial parking lots where, where you see almost like a bulb, and it's like blinding when you look at it. These will be flat lens lights, so you actually have to be really close to it to actually get the actual element in view.
Okay.
And just, like, I'll reiterate that we're going to work with the board professionals to make sure that we comply with the ordinance, but we aren't overdoing the site.
Okay, thank you for that. The next thing is, you know, listen, we're going to be next to a restaurant. Restaurants, no, no question, emit grease, smoke, and smell. What do we have in terms of trying to minimize that impact on our property?
I'm going to defer to the applicant and their architect to answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the kitchen hood systems are designed now to remove the grease. That the, the smell that will come out of the diner will be much less than, you know, what the, the good old 50s diners did. They've engineered the hoods to a point where everybody is concerned about grease. Grease is not only an environmental issue, it's a fire issue. And that's something that, over the past 20 years, that standard has been increased dramatically. There, I, I can't tell you that you'll not ever smell. There, I, I can't tell you that you'll not ever smell bacon, you can smell bacon everywhere. But, but it's, it won't be an oppressive overriding odor.
Okay, and then obviously the build will hopefully be after pandemic is lifted, but is there, is there a consideration right now for outdoor seating, tents, et cetera? Is there any plan for that at this point?
We do have a plan, that would be instead of the, the building, the addition of the fifty seats in a building, we could provide the fifty seats in a tent, but if we were going to do that, I thought that was too complicated, so if we're going to do that, we'll come back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
It looks nice, it looks like it would be better than having the building.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get all of our, 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 our questions together. Okay, so, and then litter and garbage, as with all of the issues we have with Great Adventure and Top Gun folks turning around on our lawn, we also have a lot of litter and garbage from folks throwing stuff out their windows. What, what kind of recourse do we have, especially with a, a large amount of, of clearly trash bins? You know, you guys are going to have dumpsters and such, like what recourse do we have on, on garbage being on our lawn consistently? I, I, I see it happening, sorry to say.
I'm sorry, in our, our store, our product, we're going to have two dumpsters, a dumpster and a recycling, it's going to be enclosed behind the building. So.
Okay.
Not expecting to have the garbage everywhere.
Okay.
And if you ever, if you ever get a chance to stop by the other diner, you'll see how clean and neat it's kept, it's really nice.
Okay.
Hi Ray, hi Nicole, I don't know if you remember being.
Oh, absolutely, we remember you, absolutely.
Yes, well, as you can see how I kept the, the old Johnny B's and Freehold very clean. That's how I keep all my diners, basically. I'm thirty-three, it's, I mean, it's clean as it can be, and I'm going to keep the same. I'm going to do the same thing for the new diner, I'm going to keep it, you know, as clean as a weasel.
Understood, and we appreciate that, but unfortunately I spend a lot of time on my weekend picking up garbage out of my front lawn, and, you know, now I have to worry about the side lawn as well, but.
Like I used to do in Freehold, you'll see. Picking up the, that's basically what, what I do, and you know.
Okay.
And sanitary.
And I'm sorry, this is my last comment, I do want to say I am very concerned about the limited parking. We, we do have many problems already with folks in our driveway and such, and I get that, you know, with the, with, it is a very good point that with a, with a diner and stuff, hopefully they'll turn around there instead of our driveway, but understanding the Great Adventure traffic and knowing that it's taken us twenty minutes to pull out of our driveway at times, and knowing that it takes a half hour in, in October to drive a mile down five thirty-seven. You know, I, 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 I mean, I don't, I doubt there's anything you could do, but it's just, it's very concerning that you guys go on a wait. Yes, you will only expect three to four hours of high traffic time, but three to four hours of high traffic time, if you need more than a hundred and thirty spaces, they're coming to my driveway. So, you know, they pull in, that, oh, there's no parking, let me go turn around here. That, that is just a very big concern for us, it's already, we already have fences up and signs up that are just useless because folks choose to do whatever they want anyway, and I.
The, the way, the entrance, the, the way the entrance is designed, I don't think you're going to have any problem.
Okay.
Going to your driveway.
Okay.
Especially the long chain you have in the front door.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's.
That's why it's there now.
Which I stopped at least three or four times, I always see your truck over there, I wanted to talk to you about it, that, you know what I mean, that Johnny B's was coming. So, but I, I could never find you, so.
Yeah, we work in cities, so we leave early in the morning and come home at night, but I saw you on the ring a couple of times. I have you on camera.
All right.
Well, I have, I don't know if Ray has anymore, but thank you very much for listening to our concerns and, you know, addressing the few things that are our biggest concerns.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments, we appreciate it, thank you. Okay, any comments from the board, or any other? I don't think we have anyone else. Anthony? No one else, okay, I need a motion to close public. All in favor? Okay. Mr. Galvin?
I'm about to do the long ending.
No.
I think that we tried to keep it simple, I think that this is going to be an advantage. I'm sorry, the Hendricksons were concerned about some of the things that we said, we try, we're going to, we are going to be a really good neighbor. This is a good use, this, these are good people, you're going to be glad if you approve this one. And we're willing to do what we have to do, we have to put up a fence along that side yard, we're going to do it, got to make a contribution for the sidewalk, we're going to do it. And the traffic testimony was clear. Yeah, those are big numbers that we're missing, but they're not, they're not real numbers for the use because it's really going to go based on tables, not based on the bakery space in the basement, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galvin. Anyone else have any questions, comments, no? Okay, does anyone care to make a motion? We got a second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Congratulations.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. Our next application is block four, one oh one, lot two zero dot zero two, Jackson Woods Southeast. Mr. Cleveland?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation, we've heard our initial testimony on December twenty-first. I believe we finished up with the, the site engineer, I think some of the last questions from that meeting related to basements and three-story possibility for the units, and I believe traffic and architectural testimony is, is up.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, this is still a permitted use in the zone. Had an opportunity to do another review based upon the vice submission to narrow down the list of things to talk about, and when the planner has some testimony, we'll have some conversations, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The applicant?
Mr. Chairman, we're just waiting for the applicant's attorney who is via Zoom to get on, he's.
I am, I am here.
Oh, there you are.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ron Shimannowitz from the law firm of Hutton Shimannowitz here on behalf of the applicant, Jackson Development Company. As was stated by professionals, we were last before you on December twenty-first. We presented three witnesses, Mr. Tom Bavino, we presented Mr. Dave Erickson for some historical background, and we presented Mark Leskavage, our site engineer. We have some witnesses to go, but based on the resubmission to the board and the updated review letters, my first step is to recall Mark Leskavage for some short testimony, just to catch the board up on what we've revised and some of the questions that were addressed. So, with that brief introduction and the chair's permission, I'd like to recall Mr. Leskavage.
Yes, and you're, you're here, you've been previously sworn, correct?
Yes.
Do you sound me swear or affirm that the test, that the testimony information, questions or comments you're to give today will be, represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And again, you've been previously sworn and qualified.
Thank you. Mark, you can take it away, if you could just give the board an update of what's happened since we were last at the board, the revisions that were made. Just bring the board up, up to today's date.
Yes, so in advance of this meeting, we submitted plans that are dated February first, two thousand twenty-one, and they were a comprehensive response to the planner and engineer's letter and also the fire official reports. And there's a lot of technical changes put into that, so I don't want to go through all of those changes, but I'll just summarize the major changes that I think the board would be interested in, and then I'll try to answer some of the questions that came up at the last hearing. So, what we prepared as another exhibit, which I believe is exhibit A dash twenty-two at this point in time, and for the people at home that are going online, that exhibit is actually C dash oh one dash plat exhibit revised. And this is actually the revised preliminary plat exhibit with the plans that were submitted in February. And it basically shows the same, same layout with the following exceptions. The, the right-of-way within the development was modified so that all visitor parking and sidewalks are now either on, within the right-of-way, within the private road right-of-way, or in lots that are going to be dedicated to the homeowners association. So, there are no visitor parking or sidewalk on a private lot at this point. Now, having done that, we did have to take some of the visitor parking spaces out of the project. And also in going through the engineering and planners' letters, there were certain visitor parking spots that were too close to the intersection. But all in told, we still have two hundred and fifty-two visitor parking spaces, which is nineteen more spaces than the two hundred and thirty-three that are required for the project. So, it's still a compliant project. As you can see, the spaces are still inter-dispersed throughout the project. So, we still have a, a good arrangement when it comes to parking, and as I said, it meets RSI standards. The other major thing that was done, and this was based on the planner's report and the traffic comments, we changed the circle by adding some feeder islands to give it, make it a more safe situation and easier for a, the traveling public to come through and identify where they are supposed to make rights and lefts. We added some signage and striping as well, so we think we have a safer situation within the project. As I stated, there was a lot of other changes that were made specific to the technical requirements. Specifically, we did change some of the stormwater management for the site, we still have the same basins, but we did route the storm stores at different locations to meet the requirements that were in the engineer's letter. We also added and modified the landscaping as requested. And that summarizes the major changes that we made that are shown in this exhibit. The other question that was asked, and I believe it was the chairman who asked it, with regard to the number of levels of the units, just want to clarify that, the twenty-foot wide unit is all slabs, there are no basements, and that has two different footprint possibilities. One is a two-level, twenty by forty-five, and one is a three-level, and that is a twenty by forty footprint. The twenty-four-foot wide unit only has one footprint, it does have a basement and then only two floors above, so three living levels. And that is a twenty-four by fifty-foot footprint. The twenty-eight-foot wide unit has two different footprints, has one that is, and they both have basements, and they both have two floors above. One is a twenty-eight by forty, I'm sorry, twenty-eight by fifty-four foot nine-inch footprint, and that has the owner's bedroom on the first floor, and then the upper floor has the other two bedrooms. And then there's a twenty-eight by fifty-foot wide footprint where all the bedrooms are on the second floor. So, to summarize, there are no units that are being proposed that have more than three living levels. And I believe that was all the information that I needed to provide at this point.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's all we had for Mr. Leskavage, since he had already testified at length last time, there were just those couple of cleanup items we wanted to get on the record. Unless the chair wishes to have questioning Mr. Leskavage before I call my next witnesses, a legal issue or two I wanted to cover. So, I'll, with respect to the chair, I don't know if we're ready for that, or you want to deal with Mr. Leskavage?
Does anyone from the board have any questions from this witness? No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as I said, you know, during the course of this hearing, there are a couple of issues that came up that are really legal issues, and I, I wanted to just take a minute to address them, and it's a little bit of history, and I will be brief, but it's worthwhile putting on the record because there's, some of these issues have a, a bit of a story to them. So, one issue that came up in the reviews is net density, and, and that's an issue that was long fought and discussed and argued years and years ago, and has been resolved. And, and the way it was resolved was by way of what we referred to in the first hearing, the South Site Consent Order, which is formally known as the Consent Order Stipulating, Incorporating Stipulation Settlement, that was entered by the Honorable Vincent Grosso, HASC, on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven, so this goes back ten years. But there, there is a provision in this document which governs that, that very issue and sort of puts it to bed. And I'd just like to read to the board about four or five lines. It, it says, whereas based upon Lee's intention to submit the application for preliminary and final subdivision site plan approval for the entire South Site, the net density requirement of the PMURD zone shall be satisfied based upon the total number of units to be built on the entire South Site, and the net density requirement of the PMURD zone need not be satisfied as to component neighborhoods, sections and/or parcels of the South Site. And, and that is in the whereas clause appearing on page five of the consent order. The whereas or preamble is incorporated into the body of the document by way of section eleven point one. I, I, I don't want to bore you with legal mumbo jumbo, but the applicant's position is this puts to bed the net density issue. We are at fifteen forty-one, no more than fifteen forty-one on the entirety of the project, which includes the approved and built central section, the southeast section before you tonight, and the forthcoming southwest, southwest section you'll see in the near future. So, fifteen forty-one is what you get throughout this entire comprehensive project, and you don't look at net density on a section-by-section basis. So, from our point of view, there's nothing further that needs to be said or done regarding that density. The, the other issue that came up along the way was open space, and that too was discussed and debated and through the work of the court master and the court and the parties, was addressed in the same consent order, which was signed by Judge Grosso. This appears in section two point one one of the consent order, and it reads as follows, it says, "The requirements of section one oh nine dash one seven eight of the Jackson Township Administrative Code are waived for the development application of the South Site in light of the fact that approximately sixty percent of the South Site's six hundred and ten acres are mapped wetland areas and enhanced buffer areas that will remain in their natural state after development in accordance with DEP permits." And, and it goes on from there, but I, I think you get the gist of it. The idea here, and Mr. Bavino can certainly. The idea here, and Mr. Bavino can certainly speak to it, he lived through it, I lived through it back in the day, we took less density on the site, we preserved a boatload of lands. 60% of the site, 60% of 610 acres is roughly 370 acres. There's a lot of preserved lands here. The consent order grants a waiver on this issue. And again, this is sort of ancient history, but still operative and binding on us all, even though it's some 10 years old. So the consent order very neatly addresses and disposes of both the net density issue and the open space issue. The other issue that came up along the way was the tree preservation. Interestingly, for the subject site, a tree permit was actually issued already. But in the review letter, I think it was Mr. Peters' letter, he suggested that we prepare a tree removal plan. This issue was addressed in a planning board resolution that is known as Resolution 2012-07. This was an amended preliminary approval for the overall Jackson Woods development, the 1,541 units. And in that resolution, on the, I believe it's the eighth page of the resolution, they're not numbered, I can read you the whereas clause from that resolution. It says, "Whereas, the board also identified potential waivers with respect to outdoor storage, as well as the requirement with respect to the township's tree ordinance. And the board is satisfied that the plans proposed, proposed preserve 400 out of 600 acres. And as a result, the applicant has followed the intent and purpose of the ordinance preserving two-thirds of the trees that currently exist on site, all of which are mature and would take decades to grow to manage, to mature stage, which they are currently in." So this was in the overall approval that this board granted a while back. When we came in for the central section approval, we relied on that whereas clause. There was no additional plans submitted for tree removal. We are preserving on the 300 or 400 acres of open space, a boatload of trees. And a permit has already been issued. So it's the applicant's position that there's nothing further that needs to be done with regard to trees, or showing any additional tree removal plans. That issue, from our point of view, is put to bed by the prior approval, not only the one I read from, but how the board treated the central application, which is built and occupied. So those three issues, I just wanted to take a minute and give the board the benefit of the history and the legal basis for our responses on net density, open space, and trees. And that's what I wanted to cover. And unless there are questions on that, we're prepared to proceed to our next witness.
Any questions? No? Go ahead, proceed.
Thank you. My next witness is John Ray. He's our traffic engineer. If we could have him come forth and be sworn.
Mr. Ray, we solemnly swear affirming testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Time to give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and the chairman will award you to the extent he feels necessary.
John Ray, R-E-A, a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, traffic and transportation engineers. I'm a professional engineer specializing in traffic engineering. I've testified before this board on numerous occasions.
We accept you for that.
Thank you, sir.
John, I give you the floor. If you could give a brief overview of where we're at with traffic improvements, I understand most of which deal with the Ocean County Planning Board.
Yes, we have prepared an updated traffic impact study for Jackson Woods Southeast Section dated May 2020. My firm's been involved with this project for probably close to 10 years now. The latest traffic study and the update that we prepared is based upon traffic counts that were conducted in the fall of 2019, prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. We projected those traffic volumes to a design year of 2030 in accordance with the Ocean County Planning Board protocol. We did our trip generation estimates for the 465 units based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers data. We accounted for the units in the central section over on West Commodore that aren't occupied yet. We accounted for that traffic in our traffic projections to the 2030 design year. And essentially, we have determined that an improvement is necessary at the intersection of Freehold Road, and our access is going to be to Freehold Road just west of its intersection with Cedar Swamp. We have determined that an improvement is required in order to mitigate an existing F level of service at that location, which is an unsignalized intersection. The improvement at that intersection involves shifting the intersection approximately 300 feet further south, teeing the intersection in at a 90-degree angle, signalizing the intersection, and providing turning lanes at the intersection. And with those improvements in place, the traffic signal, the widening, turning lanes, we can achieve a level of service B, as in boy, for the morning and afternoon peak hours for the 2030 design year. And as Mr. Shumanowicz has indicated, that intersection, the two roadways are under the jurisdiction of Ocean County. We will be meeting with the county next week, if I'm not mistaken, to discuss the timing of the improvements. But basically, the design of the intersection improvement at that location has been approved by Ocean County, and now it's just a question of sitting down with the county, working out the timing of the improvements, and getting the work done. With respect to the internal circulation and the residential site improvement standards, just to reiterate what Mr. Les Scavage has testified to, we meet the RSI requirements as far as the parking requirements are concerned. We actually have a little bit of a surplus of visitor parking, more than we actually need, about 19 more spaces. And essentially, the layout and the design of the project meets the RSI. And so we are compliant in that regard. Trying to think what else I can say, but I think I've run out of words. I'm sorry.
Thank you, John. Nothing further, Mr. Ray.
Any questions?
Yes. On Cedar Swamp? We are acquiring that property on the corner. I think there is a house there.
I jumped in here, Sean, you have to swear.
Yeah, Mr. Bavino, you solemnly swear affirming testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to provide will represent the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
You've been previously sworn as well.
Yes.
As well as your relationship to the applicant has been disclosed.
Yes, just to add to that, there's a house on the corner that's been boarded up. That property's been, that property's owned by the county. That house will be demolished. That's the only house that's going to be demolished. It's currently owned by the county.
Sure. If I may, Mr. Ray or Mr. Bavino, can you describe, just for the public as well, the interrelation between that proposed new intersection and the new, and the intersection that currently exists that has a light at least, is signalized, at the T of Jackson Mills and Cedar Swamp? And the interrelation between the two intersections?
Sure, I'll do my best to try that. The existing intersection of Jackson Mills Road and Cedar Swamp Road is a signalized intersection. It's located approximately 500, 600 feet north of the existing intersection of Freehold Road and Cedar Swamp Road, which is unsignalized. Our proposal is to move the existing Freehold Road intersection 300 feet further south, which will increase the distance between our signalized intersection and the existing Jackson Mills Road intersection. It'll give us approximately 800 to 900 feet between the two signalized intersections. So ultimately, what will be out in the field will be two signalized intersections offset by approximately 800 to 900 feet. Each one of those intersections will have proper turning lanes, proper traffic signal phasing and timing in order to achieve the proper levels of service that are required for the 2030 design year.
Although it's, if I may follow up, although it's off-site, do you know of any improvements that'll be incurring at the Jackson Mills location? Are they going to do a right-turning lane?
I believe there are some improvements scheduled for that intersection as well, too, but they may be tied into a different phase of the project, not this particular phase. I don't know if Mr. Bavino is aware of that, but I think there are some additional improvements that are proposed for that location, but with a different phase of the project. Right now, the single biggest thing that's necessary is to mitigate the existing level of service F condition at the unsignalized intersection, which currently exists, and to improve that condition, and to improve the safety and the efficiency of that location by redesigning it, realigning it, installing the traffic signal, and the turning lanes.
Mr. Chairman, as it relates to the timing of these improvements, either John or Tom, given that we have an existing level of service of F at the intersection, there's obviously a concern that, well, we don't know when we're going to do the improvements. We start occupying homes at an existing level of service F, and then we're going to build a construction site to build a new traffic signal at that area. That's not the most efficient process. But without understanding the totality of the history of the project, can the board reasonably expect that the traffic light would be constructed or operational before any units were occupied, or a certain number of units are occupied? How would the town, in support of public safety, reconcile that in a resolution? In other words, how do we get you to tell us what we're going to do in terms of installing this improvement while you're either starting construction or under construction?
I'll do my best to answer that question with the knowledge that I have, and maybe pass it off to Mr. Bavino to supplement it. It's my understanding that the improvements for the intersection have been approved by Ocean County. So there's really, you know, we're ready to go with the, we know what we need to do, and we know what needs to be constructed. It's my understanding, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that the construction on the improvements will start concurrently with the site work on this particular project. There is an issue of, you know, the weather. We've had a bad winter, and I, Tom maybe can chime in, but I know that we're probably looking at, you know, somewhere between 12 and 18 months to get the intersection improvements constructed, assuming that the weather holds out. We've had a pretty bad winter this year, so that could impact things depending upon how long the construction season, you know, permits us to get out there and to build. I don't know if Tom wants to supplement that.
I'd like to add to that. So we have a meeting actually scheduled with the county next week. I can say on the record, what I'm able to do, what I'm able to do is schedule a pre-construction meeting with the county, post our bonds, and schedule construction of the work. We're ready to go. The issue is, these are county roads, so it's their jurisdiction. What I can represent to the board is, once we start construction on the county roads, we will be done within 12 to 18 months. The only reason I'm throwing that six months in there is because if you put a winter timeframe, you're not able to pay. The county may not let you pay between December and March. But to Ernie's point, once we start construction of the county intersections, we will be done with both intersections in 12 to 18 months. That's what I can say. Now, obviously, I can say what I can say, but they're the county roads, we're going to meet with the county. And I also should add, I need an approval because that's what triggers the county to be able to act. And that's part of the reason why you may have heard some desperation in my voice in December, because the county wants me to start as soon as we come out of the winter weather. So obviously, there is a contingency that I need an approval, I need an application that has an approval that allows the county to be able to act.
Understanding that this project's part of the town's housing element and fair share plan, I guess I want to involve Mr. Shumanowicz now. Is it an unreasonable condition from the board to request that the light be operational before COs are issued?
Well, it's an unusual situation. This applicant--
We seem to get a lot of those here at the planning board.
I'm sure, I'm sure you do, and I appreciate that. This is very unique in the following sense, when you raise the affordable housing aspect. The affordable housing component of this project is built, which almost never happens. So this is really quite amazing what the developer has accomplished. All 88 affordable units are built, occupied, and credited to the town. So the, you know, the, you know, I don't know if that quite applies the same way. It's really a, you know, a timing issue from, perhaps from the traffic engineer's point of view, as to what the intersection can handle before you really need the improvement in.
Well, can I, may I, Mr. Chairman, may I follow up on that? We agree, do we not, that the intersection currently operates at an F level? Did I hear that correctly?
That was testified.
That's right.
So I would presume, Mr. Ray, that that intersection has meant the, met the warrants from a traffic engineering perspective that would warrant the light?
It certainly appears as though the peak hour warrants are met based on existing volumes, yes.
So I understand the hesitation from an attorney's perspective, you know, and I mean that respectfully. But I even heard further testimony that it's the applicant's intention that at the very least they have taken, should the board act favorably, that they act favorably with at least a preliminary approval, because it's there. Is it a fair statement to say that it is the applicant's intent to begin construction of that intersection as soon as, presuming the board acts favorably, at least with a preliminary approval, as soon as that approval exists?
That's correct.
And is it fair to say as well that your only hesitation is the fact that neither the board nor the applicant controls the county's go-light, so to speak, to excuse the pun?
Yes, and let me--
So--
Sorry, interrupt.
No, go ahead, you go first.
I was just going to add, to give Mr. Peters a little more comfort, that in our discussions with the county, there is a possibility to phase the Freehold Road intersection to get the light installed sooner, which addresses the level of F service. And that's our goal when we meet with the county, because we expect they're going to have similar concerns. But I can't represent that I've gotten the county to agree to that. But I understand the concerns of the town, there are concerns as well. We've been pushing the county to try and give us that approval for a number of years. We have the plans approved, and what I'm suggesting is, with the county's cooperation, we may be able to phase that project to put the light in, and I'll defer to my traffic engineer to maybe explain why that's important. But I think that addresses the biggest concern from safety, without having to tie it to a CO, because I want to keep things moving. I think if there's intent, and I posted the bonds, and the guys are out there constructing, and winter weather hits, I don't want to be tied to a CO necessarily, if I've done enough to alleviate the concerns.
Well, if I may, and Mr. Shumanowicz, if you, would you, should the board act favorably, would you accept as a condition of approval language similar to the following, or somewhat substantively to the following? That is the, that is the request of the board, and the applicant agrees that prior to any, the issuance of any COs, that construction on the intersection with the signalization occur? And that the applicant will make all due diligence to the Ocean County Planning Board to effectuate that request?
I'm going to let Tom answer that, but I think that's what he said.
I'm saying yes, but unfortunately, I have to go to the county next week, and I'm hoping that they buy in. But certainly, we're on the same page. We're on the same page, county and the applicant.
I think that, respectfully, in my opinion, should the board act favorably again, would sufficiently protect the board, the board, the public, and the applicant, because it would make your intent crystal clear to the Ocean County Planning Board that they don't, you don't want, and neither does the applicant want, to wait for any COs. They want that light first, simultaneously with any other site improvement.
And just by way of clarification, this is more to my client, Tom Bavino, the, that type of condition would also conceivably be satisfied on a phased-- type of condition would also conceivably be satisfied on a phased basis of the traffic signal, right? Because you mentioned that might be where you end up with the county, so I just--
Yeah, I'm saying, you want a signal there. You just want a signal there. It doesn't have to be the full intersection. You just want there to be a signal to address the level F service. And that's something we have to work out and negotiate with the county.
And it's your opinion, Mr. Ray, that there's reasonable information on the record to support that, given the current F grading of that particular intersection?
Yes, and what Mr. Bavino said is accurate. We'd like to talk to the county about possibly phasing the improvements to get the traffic signal in first as soon as we can in order to provide that level of safety for the people that are using the intersection before the whole intersection improvement is done. That is something that we need to discuss with the county, and that's our intent, to try to get the signal in as soon as possible.
Thank you also, Mr. Peters, for raising that. Mr. Schumanowicz?
We have nothing further, Mr. Ray. If there are no other questions of him, our next witness would be our planner, Mr. Tim Kernan. We could have Mr. Kernan sworn.
Kernan, you're raising, whoop, a little too fast for you. You're raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, and testimony you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, please? And the chairman will voir dire you as he see fit with regard to his qualifications.
Okay, sure. Tim Kernan, K-E-R-N-A-N, with Major Consulting, and I'm the professional planner tonight. I'm also a licensed engineer in New Jersey.
Have you appeared? You're both licensed planner and an engineer?
I am.
In the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
We accept your qualifications.
All right, thank you.
Tim, I'll turn it over to you. If you could bring the board through the variances, relief, and waiver reliefs that we are requesting, and the justifications for such relief.
All right, thank you. We'll do. And I have copies of what I'm going to be speaking off of that I can turn in afterwards to the board secretary or planner, Mr. Peters, your attorney, and so on. So, we really have three areas of variances that we're seeking. The first deal is with lighting for the development. It stems from Section 244-54R of your code, and if you belabor me, I'm just going to read what that section says because there's some context that I think will be helpful as I go through my justification. So, that section of your code says, "All roads, parking areas, dwelling entranceways, and pedestrian walks within a PM U R D shall be provided with sufficient illumination to minimize hazards to pedestrians and motor vehicles utilizing the same. But in no case shall said lighting be less than what is required to provide a minimum lighting level of 0.5 horizontal foot candles throughout such areas from dark to dawn. Lights shall be shielded to avoid glare disturbing to occupants of the buildings, and shall be so arranged as to reflect away from all adjoining properties." This does apply to all developments, all sections of a planned multifamily or mixed-use development. It does seem to me that it's set up more for multifamily sections. We're all attached, single-family, and this particular southeast section. But again, the opening part of that, it talks about not just roads, but parking areas, dwelling entranceways, pedestrian walks. So, again, it seems more geared towards multifamily sections. What is proposed, and Mr. Lescavich testified to that at the previous hearing, not tonight, but I just want to put that back on the record, proposed is an average of 0.2 foot candles, a maximum of 1.4 foot candles, and a minimum of 0 foot candles. The average for the roads is 0.4 foot candles, again, with a maximum of 1.4 foot candles, a minimum of 0 foot candles. And there's a minimum of 0.5 foot candles at intersections and parking areas. The second area we're seeking relief is from your unit storage requirement. That's found in Section 244-54Y4, and that reads, "In addition to storage, which may be provided inside individual units in a multifamily building, there shall be provided 200 cubic feet of storage per dwelling unit where personal effects and belongings may be stored. Such storage shall be conveniently located and be capable of being kept locked and separate from the belongings of other occupants." Here, in this section of this zone, it does say, in multifamily buildings, again, we're attached dwelling units, but to the extent that this section applies, we are seeking relief from that. And in this case, our proposal is for storage to occur in the garages. Every unit has at least a one-car, if not a two-car garage. The last section we're seeking relief from deals with signage. Signage is listed in this zone at 244-54B8 as in permitted accessory use, subject to the provisions of 244-207. When you go to 204, 244, rather, 207, it's silent on signage, unfortunately. That section of your code, 244-207, is actually in your design standards and improvements specifications article. We advertised for four variances with regard to signage. The first one was from Section 244-207B, where it says, actually, this is the heading for sign requirements in the signage section of your ordinance. But we are proposing two signs, and perhaps one sign would be permitted. So, we listed that as variance. Your planner actually brought out another subsection of that, which we also advertised for, which is really where the first variance may come from, and that's Section 244-207B6A, which talks about ground signs and where ground signs are permitted. And it really lists non-residential-type zoning districts in the township. So, you would infer that ground signs are not permitted in the PM U R D zone, whereas two ground signs are proposed at the entrance. So, we're seeking relief from that section. Then the next section is right below that, 244-207B6B, which requires a maximum height of a ground sign of six feet, and we are proposing a height of seven feet for each of the two ground signs. And lastly, we're seeking relief from Section 204-207B6G, just a little further down in that same section, where the maximum sign area of a ground sign is 30 square feet, and we are proposing 52 and 1/2 square feet, although that's both sides combined. Each side is half of that, 26.25 square feet per side. And I believe your planner was even questioning to the board whether or not the board felt that that required a variance. So, to the extent that it does, we are seeking that. I reviewed a lot of information. I won't bore everyone with that. I can just turn in my report, as I mentioned, a little later. But I'll get into the evaluation now. And as your planner put in his review letter, there are two types of bulk variances, the C1, the hardship type, and then the C2, substantial benefit. With regard to hardship C1, I would say that that really isn't applicable for the unit storage requirement variance we're seeking or the signage relief that we're seeking. But I will say this, with regard to the minimum lighting requirements of Section 244-54R, it would be extremely difficult to maintain a minimum lighting level of a half-foot candle throughout the development, especially using 12-foot-high light fixtures. The number of fixtures required would increase considerably and create an unpleasant view with the glut of light fixtures. They would also interfere with the many driveways that will exist throughout the development. Currently, they are predominantly proposed along the street line, in the vicinity of the perpendicular off-street parking areas and at intersections. Additionally, the units themselves will provide additional lighting in between the parking areas. The plans do meet the street lighting design standards found at Section 244-213, and the development functions, in my opinion, closer to that of single-family, these are single-family attached units rather than multifamily, at least for this section of the development. With regard to the second type of C variance, the substantial benefit type, C2, I looked at our land use law, and I found six purposes that I believe are advanced by our project, and they are 40, 55, D, 2, A, C, I, J, K, and N. So, A is the first purpose in our land use law, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. So, with regard to that, I believe the proposal advances this purpose. The proposed signage will promote the public safety and general welfare by alerting the public, including emergency management personnel, to the location of the development. I believe the garages will provide the needed storage for personal effects and belongings in a convenient and safe location, and the proposed lighting does conform to the township's street lighting requirements and will be augmented by individual unit exterior lighting. The next purpose that I found advanced is Purpose C, which is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Again, this purpose is advanced by not providing excessive lighting, signage that would be out of character with the township's sign standards where ground signs are permitted, and also not adding square footage to the units needlessly for additional storage. All units, as I mentioned, will have garages to store personal effects, and keep in mind that all the units landscaping will be maintained by the homeowners association. Next purpose is Purpose I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. This purpose is advanced by proposing decorative, pedestrian-oriented, street lighting that is not excessive, is attractive, excuse me, that is not excessive. Also, we're proposing attractive community ground signage and attractive townhouse units with garage space. J is the next purpose, which is to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, open space, energy resources, and valuable natural resources in the state, and to prevent urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through improper use of land. Adding additional street lighting above township standards for street lighting would be counter to this purpose. The proposed design advances this purpose. Next is K, to encourage planned unit developments which incorporate the best features of design and relate the type, design, and layout of residential, commercial, industrial, and recreational development to the particular site. This purpose is advanced as the development is one section of a larger planned unit development striving to achieve these goals. And finally, Purpose M, which is to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures in activity shaping land development with the view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. And I believe the lighting as proposed advances this purpose. So, with the building and site design features described, I believe that the benefits outweigh the detriments. With regard to the negative criteria, we need to show that the benefits of the proposal can be balanced, and that such variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of your zone plan and your zoning ordinance. With regard to the public good, again, with the building and site design features proposed, it is submitted that there will not be a substantial detriment to the public good. And with regard to your zone plan and zoning ordinance, I'd like to make the following observations from your zoning and design standards sections previously discussed. First one dealing with unit storage at Section 244-54Y4. Typically, this requirement is applicable to multifamily, and in this case, this code section does spell out multifamily, those types of units such as apartments and condominiums, as opposed to attached townhomes. In this case, all townhomes will have either, as I mentioned earlier, a one-car or two-car garage with more than 200 cubic feet of storage in addition to the area needed to park the car. Also, as previously mentioned, the HOA will be maintaining all landscaping, so there will be no need to store lawnmowers or other related equipment in these garages. The next section I want to talk about is the sign requirements found at 244-207. So, Section 244-207B6B states, quote, "Ground signs shall not exceed six feet in height measured from the finished grade directly below the sign to the top of the sign." Here, the seven-foot dimension that we're seeking, a variance for, proposed is the overall height of each sign measured to the top of the decorative stone veneer wall and the wood support posts, if you were to look at the detail. The height to the top of the sign itself is approximately, I don't have an exact number, but it's approximately six inches lower. So, we may exceed the sign height requirement by about six inches. Section 244-207B6G of that same sign requirement section states, quote, "The maximum size for a single ground sign for a retail store, a shopping center, an office building, a group of offices, an institutional use, or an industrial use is 30 square feet," end quote. So, again, the ground sign section of the code is talking more for non-residential. It's just silent on residential. Each sign is only 26 and 1/4 square feet, which I believe conforms. And then lastly, Section 244-207B6H states, quote, "Buildings located at the intersection of two or more streets or that have frontage on two or more streets may be permitted a total of two ground signs, one on each of two street frontages. In no case shall there be more than two ground signs." That's more, again, for non-residential development, where you would have a shopping center or some type of commercial use at an intersection of a couple of roads, and you would permit a ground sign on each road frontage. We do have an intersection of two streets. We have County Route 638, and then the proposed Club Boulevard. So, we do have an intersection, but it's really not, it doesn't quite fit exactly into your code section there. But I just wanted to kind of relate what's proposed, and your planner even mentioned that code section in his review letter. I would note that there's a number of developments in the township that have rather large ground signs, and it becomes an aesthetic feature of the development, the Ponds at Jackson, the Gardens at Jackson, the Four Seasons, on North County Line Road, Cooks Bridge on North Cooks Bridge Road, and West Lake on South Cooks Bridge Road and Winding Way, all have features, entrance features, and ground signage. So, the last section I want to talk about is your lighting requirements in Section 244-213. So, that section provides design standards for street lighting. The requirement for average-maintained lighting level is 0.4 foot candles, and the plan conforms to this requirement. The section of the code which requires the variance, which is 244-54R, appears, as I said earlier, to be written more for multifamily development. So, taken together, I would say, as a result, it is submitted that there will not be a substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of your zone plan and zoning ordinance. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And Ryan, I don't know if you have anything else further for me?
No, thank you, Tim, for getting us through that efficiently. I have nothing further, Mr. Kernan.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Schumanowicz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness is our architect, Mr. Robert Regazzoni. We're going to have him sworn.
Sir, if you'd raise your right hand.
Robert, you're on mute. There you go.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation? The chairman will ask you questions regarding your qualifications.
Robert Regazzoni, R-E-G-A-Z-Z-O-N-I, Principal and Weight Architecture Architects for the project, licensed in New Jersey.
You've testified before us before, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
What were your qualifications?
Licensed in the state of New Jersey, Principal and Weight Architecture.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Robert, you can proceed. What we'd like to do is briefly just show the board what the renderings or elevations of the five different models are, and then see if there's any questions regarding those presentations.
Yeah, and I was trying to see if the person who is in charge of the slides can just go through Exhibit 11 through 19 and just quickly pass through them. So, just to give you a taste of what is the streetscape proposed for the project-- So just to give you a taste of what is the, the streetscape proposed for the project. And we already discussed a little bit of, with, with the first person in, in the presentation on, on the sizes and, and different unit types that we're proposing, two and three stories. So that's been covered. Basically, right now, I'm here to answer questions and, and walk you through the streetscape of the proposed units. So if somebody can help us showing us the exhibits presented, please.
Did you want to start with exhibit A eleven, Zach?
Yep, that should be good, and then we just go through them.
Okay. Is it possible to put up A eleven?
It, it appears up.
Oh, we're not, we're not seeing it, that, that's good. It's not showing on the, on the screen, on our screen.
Anyway, I, I do have copies of those, so if you, members of the boards are seeing the renderings provided. Exhibit A eleven shows the twenty-eight foot, you, you got it there. Twenty-eight foot frontage unit to, to level, two stories. Two car garage, as you can see there, it's a, it's a combination of different materials from stone siding and shingle, asphalt shingle roof. And shakes on, on certain accident portions of the elevations. We can, if you want to, we can move to exhibit A thirteen, which is another.
Oh, hang on, hang on, let's go, let's go to A twelve first, let's at least try to go in order.
Okay, A, A twelve would be the, the black and white elevations of the, of the three, three level units. You can put it on the screen if you want to as well, the renders stock better, but we can flip through those as well. That would be exhibit eight twelve, if you want to. There you go. This is a typical six unit building. As you can see there, three levels, we are showing the typical floor plan on the bottom. And suggested staggering of the units in floor plan. And we could move to exhibit A thirteen now, which is the, the actual color rendering of the same building.
All right, A thirteen is on our screen.
Okay. Eight, eight thirteen then reflects the, the previous, the previous exhibit on, on a coloring rendering showing. The extension of the stone finishes, same sightings. This, in this case, we have a single car garage unit with a twenty-foot frontage each. Now we can move to the next exhibit, A fourteen, which would be our twenty-four foot unit two level double, double car garage.
That's A fourteen.
That should be A fourteen if you got them. So then, as you, as you can see again, the unit, Paul Andrew, is a twenty-four foot frontage unit, and it's a two level. We're currently showing a six unit building combination that also provides certain staggering as shown on the footprint. The following exhibit, A fifteen, would be a color rendering of this unit. And from the, from A fifteen, you also will see that we're trying to integrate a common language for all the units that we're having on the, on the development. So it looks coherent. And finally, if you want to, we can move to exhibit A sixteen, which would be our crafting unit. It's a twenty-eight foot frontage unit we're presenting here. Two unit building. And with, like you mentioned, a two car garage. And finally, exhibit A seventeen is a color rendering of the same two units. That gives you a little bit of more depth and feeling of the finishes and materials that we're proposing.
Could you speak more into your microphone, please? You're coming out wobbly.
I'm sorry, so the, the last exhibit, A seventeen, would be the color rendering of the floor plans that we saw previously on A sixteen. And this gives you also the, the materials that we're using and colors and finishes that we're proposing here. Which are in harmony with the rest of the proposed elevations that you've seen on previous exhibits. And I think that wraps up our presentation of the architectural language that we're using for the units.
Thank you, Robert, I, nothing further, Mr. Regazzoni.
That's all I have.
The, the question was, is every house gray?
No, not every house is gray, this is what's been selected, but there's going to be a combination of different colors and tones on them.
Can you describe those combinations or your expectation?
We're expecting to be on, on the same pattern of colors on, on the grays or earth tones. There's not going to be severe contrast of colors if that's the question between units.
Anyone else? Do I still have everyone here?
Well, he said grays and earth tones, so hearing, hearing that, maybe you can follow up with a little bit more explanation about what even that means? What are grays and earth tones? Use red brick, do, I mean, I'm throwing out ideas.
There's probably going to be some, some of the red brick, mostly it's this stone, the concept that we're using, but the, the bricks are going to be on the, on the reddish tones. The tan colors is the other ones that we were thinking on, on colors for the units. In combination with, like I say, the, the grays and darker colors in that sense. Right now, we have not developed completely the color, the color schemes for, or the complete color palette for, for the project. It's something that was going to be later on presented also.
Anyone else? Everybody awake? Okay. All right, your next witness?
Yes, our next witness is Mr. Bob Fecchio, we're going to have him sworn.
Mr. Fecchio, you're, I think you're also muted. Are you?
He's muted.
There we go.
Sir, raise your right, right hand, there you go.
Hi, hi.
Swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then some qualifications for the record, please?
My name is Robert Fecchio. F E C S O, I'm a vice president at D R Horton. I've been developing in, in the Monmouth County, Ocean County area for thirty-five years now. I've, I've entitled and constructed over fifteen thousand homes. The last big one in Ocean County was my Renaissance. Count, a syntax Renaissance community was considered of twenty-two hundred units.
All right, Mr. We will be, excuse me, excuse me. I presume he's not testifying then as an expert, but more merely as a representative of the potential builder.
That, that's correct, he's, he's a fact witness.
All right, thank you.
So one, one further question, Mr. Fecchio. D R Horton is the contract purchaser of the subject property, is that correct?
Yes, and we will be constructing all the homes there and as well as the clubhouse and an amenity package for the community. It will be subject to another application.
Excellent, and during the, by the way, were you present or electronically or in person at the first hearing, the December twenty-one hearing? Is that correct? Okay, and you, you're familiar with certain issues that arose that would be more easily answered by you as, as the builder of the project? If you could take us through those issues that came up along the way, I think they would, the board would appreciate having answers to some of those questions.
Yes, I can. One of the questions came up that we were going to have the wet ponds and basins and in the entrance. And it was a question regarding mosquitoes and how we're going to control the mosquitoes on our wet ponds throughout the community. And what I've done in the past, we stocked these ponds with eastern mosquito fish. And they feed on the larvae, and they've been used throughout the United States control mosquito problem heavily in Monmouth County. I mean, in Middlesex County, where I did a lot of lakes and a lot of ponds. And they work very well.
You can keep running through the issues and if the board has questions, we'll, we'll catch up with you at the end.
Not a problem. Next one was the, was the maintenance of the roads, drainage facilities, clubhouse, and recreation facilities. And all open space, both passive and, and active, all that's going to be retained by the homeowners association. The next question was the start of the construction of the clubhouse, completion of the clubhouse and amenity package. It's our intent to start the amenity package. Day one, once the roadways are, are going in, I would like to put the entry signs in. The upgraded landscaping I'm going to propose in the next application for the amenities going up the, up the main boulevard. And then the entry fountains that we'll have in the basins as well as the entry wall up in the roundabout till we get to the top. And then we would start the clubhouse, and I'm anticipating starting the clubhouse portion of it. Towards the end of section one, or around the hundredth CO. And I would have that, once I get the building permit for the clubhouse itself, I will have that whole thing completed within a year's time. Clubhouse, the pickleball courts, the pool, and all the other amenities I'll be proposing in the application that, that'll be forthcoming. The irrigate, we'll have irrigation on the entry boulevard and the frontage of the site. Going up the main road and the common open space as well as the front yards of all the units will be irrigated. The irrigation will be fed by wells throughout the community. The wells will not exceed a hundred thousand gallons each, not to draw down or be counted against the township's allocation permits. And that will also be maintained by the homeowners association. We won't, will not have any security gates or any guard houses in the community, even though it's, it's like a private community and the roadways will be private. But there'll be no, like, no guards at the, at the entry. All maintenance services will be held by the homeowners association, the lawn, the ponds, and everything of that nature. And all municipality service will be fine assistant to the HOA community, other HOA communities. Within Jackson Township under current, current missile services act. I think that's about it. I don't remember any other questions, I had those all of my notes from the first meeting. If there's any other questions from the board or anyone, go ahead.
Anyone?
Yeah, I got a question. I mean, maybe I misinterpreted what you said, but the amenities and the clubhouse. You anticipate them being done by the hundredth certificate of occupancy?
Yes, the, the start of the clubhouse, the start of the clubhouse, I wouldn't want to start the clubhouse. I will start the amenities immediately, meaning the, the entry features, the fountains in the basins. The upgraded landscaping going up the boulevard, and all that will be started immediately. And I will have the clubhouse. I'd like to start the clubhouse itself at the hundred CO.
So, so basically, the first number of residents will not have a clubhouse, will not have a pool, will not have any amenities? Is that what I'm understanding you're saying?
Yes.
How is that going to be handled, if I'm going to be, if I was a resident there and I was told I'm going to have a pool and a clubhouse? And I don't have one for a number of months, year, whatever. How is that going to be handled as far as dealing with people?
That's going to be disclosed in our disclosure document when we're going to start the clubhouse and when it's going to be completed. Right at, right at point of sale, before we sell them the units. They'll know what the many Patrick, package will consist of, what, what, a schedule of when everything's going to start and when it's going to be completed.
So upfront, they'll know whether or not to buy until it's all done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you ever adjust the association dues because these amenities are not available yet?
No, we do not.
Okay, buyer beware. Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, our, our last witness is just some cleanup testimony wrapping it all up for you is from Tom Bavino. If we could just have him come forward, he was previously sworn and then previously sworn again, so he is duly under oath. So Tom, if you want to take us home on this, just close us out. I know there may have been some just requests to have, just reemphasize your, your testimony. Early on, you kicked this application off with a nice introduction, maybe just give a very brief closeout for the board.
No.
I can go up to. Okay, that's better, okay. No, what I really wanted to do, I spoke early in the December meeting, and then there was a lot of testimony after me. So I just wanted to reemphasize. This, this project is part of an overall project that many people know as Jackson twenty-one. And really, what I hope the new members of the board learn tonight is like, this is really a story, and this is like the fourth chapter of a story. There's two more chapters that are going to be told. The next, because I want the board to know what's coming. After this application, we will be coming in within three months making an application. I may not see you for some time, but the application will be made shortly to finish up the walking trails. That will link the southwest, the southeast, and direct the bikes and the pedestrians north to West Fish Road. And eventually, hopefully further north to the mixed use community. And then we'll need an extension on the southwest community, which is another rental community, the last chapter of the fifteen forty-one. We have no plans to come in with the final site plan application until the gardens is at a hundred percent occupancy. What we're being told by the owner of the gardens is that should be another year or two. So again, if you want to, just in your mind, understand the balance of the south site, that's the timeframe. More importantly, and I know it's on a lot of people's minds, including ourselves. Is really the core of the dream, which is the mixed use and the commercial component, which we refer to as the north site. And that's all the commercially zoned and mixed use zoned lands to the north, up by the glorious market and exit twenty-one. We will be making an application again within the next three to six months. Our goal is to meet with the economic development committee in the next month and kind of outline what our goals are, get some feedback. And I want to reemphasize, our goal has always been to kind And I want to re emphasize, our goal has always been to kind of check in with the town. And let the town know what our intentions are ahead of time, so there's no surprises. Or, you know, something that people didn't expect. So our goal is to really speak with the Economic Development Council. And then subsequent to that, make applications for large scale mixed use and commercial, which I know everybody's waiting. Lastly, I'll just say, as I've said to many of you in the past, this community is not something any person can drive. It's it's we've always said it's market driven. So we strongly believe, once these townhomes get started, we'll have enough rooftops in the immediate vicinity that's going to really start to drive the commercial development. And I know that's what everybody's looking for, including ourselves. So with that, I'm. Ready to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you for your time.
Anyone? Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Bavino, can you just talk about the site? Across the street from Glories. That's been started the development. There was a question from a member of the public that talked about that process, saying, why has it been cleared? What's your plans for that site and relate it to the testimony that you just gave?
Okay, so we have always, under our settlement agreements with the town, we're allowed to install infrastructure. And normally that consists of doing some clearing and stormwater infrastructure. So there's a regional stormwater basin. On that commercial property that you just referred to. That regional basin will one day be a manmade lake, and that, I think I mentioned to one of the planning board members. That will have our goal and plans are to have walking trails around that lake and make that an amenity of the mixed use community, which is part of the north site. So right now, all you're seeing is clearing and the installation of or completion of the regional basin on that property.
But and again, I was not here either, but it's my recollection of your testimony that part of that process, I think you just said this. I'm repeating my, I'm repeating, I apologize, that the site as it exists now. With the partial development was permitted pursuant to previous settlements. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, we have an agreement on the mixed use site that permits us to put infrastructure. Approval, and we do have. Some of you may recall, Jackson Commons, that is the existing approval that allows us to do the infrastructure. We spent a lot of time with Department of Environmental Protection, working closely with them, reaching agreements. And we've been filing our conservation restrictions and doing all the things. I think that was another question a member of the public had. We've gotten all our approvals from Ocean County soils, Department of Environmental Protection. We posted restoration bonds with the township. We've alerted the zoning officer and the township engineer who are on site, the township engineer doing the inspections. So we've complied with all of the requirements. I I do have to say one last thing, and I apologize, but I do have to. Give a sincere thank you to Denise Bono and Christian David, because I got to tell you, this Zoom stuff is very, very difficult. I'm only one applicant. I can't imagine what they deal with all the time. But just getting prepared for this meeting involved a lot of work, and the little people behind the scenes don't get the recognition. So I just wanted to say that for the boards.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. I guess we have some people that are still awake with us online. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Does anyone have their hand raised? Okay. Go ahead, put them on. Hello? Mr. Bergman.
Yeah, thank you. The first question is, I have a number of questions.
Hold on a minute.
Sure.
You wouldn't mind, please, can you activate your camera, please? Thank you. Mr. Berg, we need to swear it in. Mr. Bergman, thank you. You raised your right hand. Thank you. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address? And before you do that, I just want to make the record clear that, Mr. Bergman, thank you, you followed the directions of the notice. He submitted four questions, which, as an officer of the of the planning board, I can represent, were forwarded to. The applicant's attorney as well. But, Mr. Bergman, spell your last name and your address, please.
Randy Bergman, B E R G M A N N, five Brentwood Drive.
Is that in Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I had a number of questions, and I think you just answered my first one. Which was, if I submit them in writing to you or the Planning Board Secretary. Is there any reasonable expectation that they'll be answered?
Of course.
Okay, good. Just a couple of. Couple of questions. I wanted to ask about Freehold Road. Whether or not there are any improvements planned for west of Freehold Road or the western. Part of Freehold Road that's west of the development site. That is a very dangerous area. There were a number of fatal accidents along there. It's a very dangerous stretch. It's a narrow road. The only only shoulder and parts of it are just big, deep ditches. And so I would assume there'll be a lot of additional traffic. Generated there, and I'm just wondering whether there are any plans to improve that road.
Mr. Bergman, to the extent I can answer that question, I do not. John Ray, the traffic engineer. I reviewed the plans. I did not see any improvement plans for that section of West Freehold Road. As you know, it's under the jurisdiction of Ocean County. We will be meeting with the county, I believe, March first, if I'm not mistaken. So the if the county requires something of us, we will take that into consideration. But as of this moment, there's nothing planned for that stretch of the road. And I would say, as as the traffic engineer for the project. If you have any information regarding fatal accidents on that stretch of Freehold Road. I really and truly would appreciate you sharing that with us. We'd like to take a look at it and see what. You know, the cause or the reasons for those accidents were. So if you could share that information, it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, there was a cluster of deaths there several years ago involving teenage drivers. But I will, I will get that information to you, but I would hope that. This is something that you would encourage the county to do rather than asking the county to voluntarily upgrade. And if you drive that stretch at all, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Well, I I have driven that stretch, and I I. Don't quite see exactly what you're referring to, but what I would suggest is that if you have the information regarding those fatal accidents, since we are going to be meeting with the county within the next week. If you want to forward that information to the county engineer's office, we would like, we'd like to take a look at it and see if there's an issue out there that we can help resolve.
Okay, I'll submit it to the Planning Board Attorney first, and she can pass it along. I'll take a couple of pictures also. That might might help. At the December hearing. The applicant's attorney, Ronald Schmenowitz, praised the. Gardens portion of the Jackson twenty-one project for integrating the affordable and market rate units. I'm wondering why that same concept hasn't been applied to the southeast portion. Which satisfied its affordable housing obligation by creating an entirely separate development, the ponds. Why, why, why isn't this development integrated in that same way?
I can address that. This is Tom Bavino for the applicant. So that particular, there's two two primary, two two primary reasons. Number one. Very difficult to integrate affordable housing in a fee simple community, very difficult to qualify homeowners. Banks and other institutions make it very difficult, and what that does is it holds up the ability for the market rate units to move forward. The second opportunity that got presented in our particular case was after Superstorm Sandy. There was, there was a lot of federal assistance coming into New Jersey. And a lot of the shore communities that were most impacted were not able to get the housing rebuilt as quickly. So they expanded the market area and Jackson, and we were fortunate enough to then be eligible to receive the federal assistance. So as a result of that, we took advantage of the opportunity, and because of that, we now have lead certified homes for those affordable families. So those affordable units, I would put up against any market rate units out there in terms of quality and energy efficient design.
It seems to me, though, that that the fact that you could bring people in from the outside, and you said it was Sandy affected, supposed to be Sandy affected homeowners. I drove through there a couple of times during the summer, and it seemed like it was almost all minorities in there. Is that true? And was there any effort to either make certain that there was an ethnic mix there? Or was it determined that you really were trying to target minorities for those?
So, Mr. Bergman, I guess respectfully. I would take that the position that that question is inappropriate. Provided that the Federal Housing Administration and the fair housing laws are not being violated, and that's an issue of enforcement. Question of targeting or not targeting any person. Or any type of people is not really relevant for the applicant. If I may paraphrase what I understand his testimony to be. Was that, and this is my understanding, that the applicant, for whatever their reasons, took advantage of a change in the federal government's. Regulations that, using layman's terms, freed up money to provide additional housing, affordable housing. In a certain market area, and that market area was expanded to include the western portions of Ocean County from the shore area. When the shore shore communities could not take advantage of the house, you know, of of the existing dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Bavino, that I missed?
Yeah, no, that's that's pretty close. We don't make the rules. We just take advantage of the rules that are put in effect by government. And as I said earlier, a lot of people were displaced during Superstorm Sandy, and so the geographic area was expanded to include. Jackson, which then made Jackson eligible for these projects in Jackson eligible for the funds, and we took advantage of that. And as I mentioned, we were able to build very high quality housing there with lead certified homes.
The flip side of that, though, I suppose, is that many Jackson residents were excluded.
You should, you should do some research on affordable housing. There's a legal process that prevents discrimination. So all residents were eligible. And I can actually tell you a personal experience. Many of you know I have a welcome center at the catty corner from Glories. And I actually had somebody who did some service on our on our well there, and I'm proud to report that he was a resident of the ponds. And was was grateful that housing like that was available because he has, he was a Jackson resident. Moved into the ponds because he qualified and now is a proud homeowner in Jackson. I'm happy to share that with the board.
Was there any requirement when this overall general development plan was approved? That it be phased in such a way that retail and commercial were built before or at any point in the in the overall development?
There was not.
No.
Just one last question. The the consent order required or allowed for the provision of fifteen. Hundred forty-one residential units. Can you break that down by each phase? I'm kind of interested in knowing. What, how much is left? How much has been built or will have been built? If the southeast section is is approved. And what the remaining units will be in the. I guess it's the what southwestern corner in the. In the commercial and the multi-use. Can you break that down, the number of residential units in each of the components?
Sure, you can check my math, but central section is five hundred and ten units. Southeast affordable eighty-eight units. The application tonight, four hundred and sixty-five units. And I believe that leaves a balance of four hundred and seventy-eight units in southwest, which will be a rental community. Like the gardens, but we're hoping to introduce a different product type.
All right. Okay, those are all the questions for tonight. I have a few more, but I'll pass them along in in writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anthony, do we have anyone else with a hand raised? Think that's Rashudi? Mr. Rashudi, can you hear me? You have your.
I can hear you. Let me get my video started.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Rashudi, how are you?
Okay, good evening, gentlemen.
If you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present to the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I swear.
Thank you. Give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
Joseph Rashudi, R I C C H I U T I. At seven Cory Lane in Jackson.
Go ahead, Mr. Rashudi.
Is there going to be any on-street parking in this development?
This is Mark LaScabbage for the applicant site engineer. Mr. Rashugi, there is perpendicular parking. That's visitor parking within the development. There's no other parking along the right away, only in perpendicular spots adjacent to the road.
Okay. How how big are those perpendicular parking spots going to be?
They're nine by eighteen feet.
Nine by eighteen. Okay. In the in the right of way of the of the streets going through the development. How wide is the right of way?
Twenty-four feet wide.
Twenty-four feet wide. And those perpendicular parking spots, are they going to be included in that right of way?
No, they're off the twenty-four feet.
Completely off the twenty-four feet, okay? In reference to the townhouse units, the driveways. How wide are those going to be?
Two-car garages are seventeen feet wide, and the one-car garages will have ten feet wide.
Okay. The square footage of the garages. A single-car garage, what would be the total square foot? I didn't see it on the plans.
I'd have to refer to the architect on that.
Single-car garages will be around to ten by twenty, and doubles are about. Nineteen by twenty-one.
Okay, because what I'm referring to is the. I guess there's a variance for the storage space for the units. If I understood testimony earlier, am I correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so a single-car garage is going to be ten by twenty. Okay. So, a single-car garage is going to be 10 by 20. Is that correct, Mr. Regazzoni?
That's approximate. I can give you the exact dimensions if you want.
That's roughly 200 square feet, correct?
About, yes.
Now, this variance for storage space is for, they're required to, to give 200 square foot of storage space per unit, correct?
Cubic. 200 cubic.
Okay. But are, they're going to be able to get a car in there, plus give up to 200 cubic feet?
Yeah. Just by storing along one of the walls of the garage, you can, you can get that cubic space.
Okay. The lot sizes, from the rear of the unit to the end of the unit's property line, what is the setback going to be?
That one, I will have to defer to the planner.
We're getting that number for you. Hang tight. So, the requirement is 20 feet to the rear lot line?
From the, from the rear of the townhouse to the rear of the lot line is going to be 20 feet?
That's the requirement, yes, and we meet the requirement.
So, if they were to put a 12-foot deck or a 10-foot deck on the back of their townhouse, that's going to give them less than 10 feet to the back of the property line?
That's correct. And the decks are all shown on the plans.
Okay. So, basically, the kids are going to have a 10-foot backyard to play on, or a front asphalt driveway in the front to play on. Is that correct?
It's, it's correct to the extent that we meet the ordinance. That's how the zone was designed. We're complying with it. So, whatever flows from that, flows from that.
Okay. So, but, a setback in, in the township, the setback from the back of the deck, what is the, the number of foot, from, feet, from the back of the deck to the rear of the yard, the setback? So, are they going to do, all, all the units going to require variances when they want to have a deck in there?
No variances are proposed for the decks.
Because I always thought you had, have X amount of feet from the rear of the deck to the back of your yard. I don't know offhand what the footage is, but I'm sure it's more than 10 feet, 10, 12 feet.
We're not requesting any relief. So, whatever the requirements in the zone and of the town, we are planning on complying with. We're not seeking any relief.
Well, instead of, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bavino, if you can get someone to answer just a question. It's my understanding that the plan showed proposed decks, correct? And do you know the, do you know the setback in the zone from the proposed deck to the, to the property line?
Well, I believe there are 8 by 10 decks, so 10 feet.
And that, and it's your testimony that that's permitted in this zone?
Yes.
So, nothing bigger than an 8 by 10 deck?
That's what we're showing on the plans.
So, can a homeowner come in later and build a larger deck, or we, he have to apply for a variance from the zoning board?
If you didn't meet the setback, you'd have to apply for a variance, yes.
Okay. You should, it's an awful lot of small yards. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else have their hand raised?
All right. Mr. Jacob, how many folks were on, just so the record's clear?
14.
14, sorry. Thank you.
That's counting the panelists. Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Concerns?
Well, Mr. Chairman, prior to the motion, I just want to make sure the board is aware at this late hour what the applicant is asking for. Mr. Bavino, I know you're here, and I know, given the hour, there's been some discussion amongst us. I would ask, just, as I think, given the hour, and giving some of the follow-up questions and concerns, while the applicant did notice for and ask for preliminary and final for Section 1, would the applicant be willing to waive the request for final and seek just preliminary for that portion?
If I could address that, we, we did indeed apply for and notice for preliminary major subdivision for the entire development, the 465 units. And, and we did the same for final major subdivision approval, just for the first section. Our humble request to the board is to include the final on Section 1. And, and the main reason we asked for that is, if the board, the testimony the board heard is effectively what you'll hear if we come back for final for Section 1. So, I mean, one factor is, is time and efficiency. We know how busy this board is. But we have basically presented the case for final approval for Section 1. Whatever conditions flow from approval, if the board's inclined to grant approval, would apply equally to a preliminary versus a final. So, I, I think it's certainly in the applicant's interest, but it's also in the board's interest, having heard the testimony that really covers a final approval. Otherwise, we're severing that part out, continuing it, getting it on the next agenda, and we're back before you. And when we come back before you, you're going to hear the same story all over again. So, with all due respect, we would request that the, the application for final just for Section 1 be included in the relief granted. I'm not sure if Mr. Bavino has anything to add to that, but that would be my response to Mr. Gertner's inquiry.
How does the board feel? No. Anyone else? Go for it. Okay. Make a motion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Justwicki?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Bacardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Time and patience.
Good evening.
You too.
Motion, Mr. Chair. Okay. All in favor? All right. Thank you all.